Welcome everyone. We have a agenda tonight that's really gonna be focusing on our ETC Next process and discussion. This is our planning night on our schedule. This is the first of our revised workflows, so we're trying to really focus on these activities. We have a visiting member tonight from the Village PC, so Diana, welcome.
Good morning.
And as normal, we like to, any members that show up, we'd like to have you sit at the table with us and participate in the discussions. It's just a nice thing to have you guys join us. Public comments, do we have anybody that wants to offer anything to us tonight? Alright. I have no amendments to the agenda anyway, so we're gonna move on to our ETC Next discussion. Dana, wanna run with us for a minute?
Sure do.
Yeah. Sorry, it's been a long day and it started winding down. I'll calm down in a little bit.
There's coffee in there, right?
Yeah.
It is, I can smell it.
Well, we're really happy to be starting in the second phase of the ETC Next project. We're really glad to be welcoming back Sharon and Mark for the excellent job that they and all of us did on the draft town plan, the draft master plan for the town center. Just to make some reintroductions, because we had a little bit of a hiatus. Mark and Sharon, that's Ned. Well, you all have nameplates, so I guess I don't have to do that.
I do too.
Yeah. So, well Ned lives in the Village, Tom the Town, Josh the Town, Dusty the Town, Shu the Town, John?
Town.
Town. Diane, Village. So that gives you a better orientation. So where we left off, we have this fantastic draft Essex Town Center Master Plan. And so what we're gonna do now is write the regulatory framework for the town center as we redefined it in the plan. This is what we would call being in the weeds. And you know, a lot of time here, oh, we don't wanna be in the weeds, but at meetings and stuff like that. But this is a time that we actually do need to be in the weeds, so the people that come after us don't have to go there. And that doesn't mean that you won't have to analyze the regulations that we develop as part of this process against development projects. It just means that you are going to participate in creating the regulatory framework for the new town, for this town center. And that doesn't happen all that often. Especially, it could happen like in a piecemeal framework, but you guys are doing it wholesale. And that really only happens in Essex like once in a, I don't know, generation. Joking, but 1991 was the last time that we envisioned this area of town. And then we wrote the implementing regulations. And we don't often get around to planning on this elevation and then get into the weeds that often in Essex, so this is where it's gonna get really fun and really exciting. Yeah, just about. Yeah. So that's why this project, this project is so interesting and fun. You know, to just leave off where we got with the end of the town plan, the draft town plan process is, we had a lot of, we had some community input through a focus group outreach process and a survey. And we learned a lot about what Essex wants to look like and be up there. The survey was particularly interesting. And we didn't learn anything, we didn't learn that a lot of things were totally aligned. We heard contradictory stuff. We heard that people wanted, didn't want buildings that were too tall. But people didn't want sprawl. But people wanted denser areas in our town center. So what do you do with that as a planning commission? That's really at the heart of what's hard about community planning, is that when people in a, in a community planning process tell you different things, and that's what you're gonna deal with as part of this phase. You know, people say we want connectivity up there. That's great, but how do you cross Route 15 in, you know, a safe way? When people that respond to surveys and as part of the focus group in the open house say, "We want it to just flow as part of this commuter arterial." So these are the kind of challenges that are gonna be for you. And there aren't a lot of easy answers, which is why this is gonna be interesting. We were told that design should respond to views. The Village Prevent Survey told us that they responded favorably to images that reflect traditional Vermont architectural styles and vernacular. Gabled roofs, more than flat. But also that context and setting were important. Well, development these days can be really, really boxy. As you've seen, what we're getting up there is box. And it's expensive to do non-box. To do, break buildings up into various, or you know, townhouses, or cottages, or whatever you want. It's not responsive to the market, cuz it's too expensive to build. So what the market gives us is what we have up there, which is a bunch of boxes. So if we want cottages with porches, this is the nexus that you have to write this into code. And that's what's gonna be so hard about it, and so interesting about it. And with that, I'll turn it over.
So thank you, appreciate the opportunity to come tonight. Obviously, we'll pull up a graphic in a minute that kinda shows out the roadmap, but Dana's absolutely right. I think the step we're now in with you guys, helping you guys out, is gonna be, it's gonna be a long process. This is not a two-week sort of effort, this is a almost a year effort ultimately. And the most important thing that I will say, that I, that we, that we will commit to is, we wanna understand what you wanna do. Our job is not to impose upon the town the regulations that we think make sense. Our job is to glean out of this, these conversations we're gonna have, what you guys want, and then try to find the best way to codify that in something that articulates the vision that you have for Essex Town Center, and gives you the regulatory tools to make sure that it can happen. So it's, and it's going to be a very iterative process. And I think we'll, we'll talk about how we structured this, because there was a lot in the ETC Next Plan. There's a lot of information in there. I know you guys have had a chance to look at it. We've had some very substantive comments from the town, from different departments in the town, all of which is really important, some private residents have given us some good comments as well. But at the end of the day, there's a lot of information in there. And the best way that we can think of to actually break it down into coming up with the regulations is to break down those, those critical things and work with you guys to understand what you wanna regulate and what you don't wanna regulate, cuz you don't have to regulate everything. But when we find ourselves at a crossroads of saying, "This is something we should regulate or not", we have to keep going back to the vision that you have for Essex Town Center and ask yourselves, "If you don't regulate this, or don't provide guidance to this point, what happens to our ability to achieve the vision?" And that's really kinda the, that's the complexity of this. The vision statement that's, actually the draft vision statement for the overall Essex Town Center that was articulated in the plans on page 22, you have it. You know, talks about, for the first time really, I think in a clearer way for this, this part of Essex, it talks about the architectural character as being a really important component of it. So as this process goes forward, we're gonna have a conversation at some point. Actually, I can tell you exactly when we're gonna have that, would be January 24th and February 28th. But we're gonna have a conversation about architecture. And we're gonna have a conversation about heights, and we're gonna have a conversation about form, and we're gonna have a conversation about all those things. And when you guys are faced with the questions of, "Should we regulate building types? Should we regulate massive buildings and types of architectural characteristics?", you're gonna find, there are some people that will agree with that, there are some people that won't agree with that. We have to keep going back to the vision statement, saying, "If you don't regulate some of these things, what happens? How do you, what's the consequence of not providing that guidance and regulation to assure that it does develop in a way that you see, you see that it's good?" I will also preface that professionally, I'm really pleased that, you know, even though this is still a draft plan, and it's purposely draft, because we wanna go through this process, so at the end of it, we can actually finish it along with the regulations you create to actually have a very tight, clear presentation of what the community wants. But I've also been really pleased with it, actually, I think the plan's already had some of the intentions that it has, that we wanted it to have. Some of the conversations with staff about ongoing efforts within the Essex Town Center are, I think are being informed by the plan as it exists today even. And that's a good sign. That's a good sign that A, it has some resonance with, with the community, and also that there's some, there's some truths in here that may be really useful and touchstones that we can come back to as we need to, to make sure we don't lose the overall, you know, intention here. In terms of disposition of work, Dana talked about the weeds, and Sharon will be the weed eater. She'll be working out the weeds. My job will make sure that we don't lose the vision in this process. And so we, sort of we have yin yang this, this sort of effort here. Where we were, I was involved more in the development of the draft plan, Sharon was sort of supportive in there. We're kinda, kinda switching roles a little bit. But at the end of the day, I think what we'll end up doing is, is, you know, bringing forward these pieces of the puzzle and helping you understand how they fit to the overall vision and make sure that at the end of the day, we don't lose sight of that. Darren, could you pull up the roadmap? I think that would be a good graphic to start off with. Yep, right there, yeah, okay. So it's not the most attractive document, but we have taken time with staff to, to try to map out this process for you. And we are here on the, on the 27th of September. And we've got seven, well, seven buckets of information that we need to go through in this, in this engagement with the planning commission phase. Review of the neighborhoods and district, which we wanted to today. We'll talk about what that means. Review of the site criteria, so the lot configuration setbacks, building lines, all of that. Review of connectivity, as Dana mentioned, that was one element that did come out a lot in the discussions in the ETC Draft. Review of open space and recreation. Review of architectural form and character, review of uses and densities. And then there's obviously some work to prepare for all that. So you can see we're breaking the, we're breaking down a lot of the core elements of this ETC plan into its constituent parts. And our job will be to make sure you don't lose sight of the big picture in that. But I think it's really important to break some of these things down, because you may decide that you are comfortable regulating these elements of site and not comfortable regulating these elements of site. And if you aren't comfortable regulating some things, that has downstream consequences that we need to be able to understand and articulate back to you. So you don't find ourselves at the end of the day unsure as to what's happening. The other thing to talk with staff about, and this is, this is, you know, I think really important, is that we will come to some, we will hopefully come to some conclusions at each one of these steps. Like tonight, when we talk about the neighborhoods, the district boundaries. We need to have some, I think for this process to work efficiently and due to get to, to get to the endpoint here, we need to have some clarity with the planning commission, that that's the right direction. And we're gonna say yes to that. So we are gonna ask you at some, at some points throughout this process to vote and say, "Yes, that's what we're gonna agree to." Now, I know that sounds sort of, sort of, you know, Machiavellian if you will, but I think it's really important, because if we, if we decide to determine boundaries for certain types of districts and then start changing them later, there's really complicated consequences of that. Not to say you can't change your mind, I'm clear about that. But, but we will try to work with you to make sure that when we, we get the clarity from you, the direction that we get from you is clear, and that we can continue to march along in a way that actually makes sense. Because again, this is a building process, this is gonna build again.
Just to key off from that, I would, I would want us to be very cognizant that if, over the course of the process, we come to a new revelation, we may have to go back and revisit something that we've already voted on, because it, it doesn't make sense with regards to something we learned going forward. So that's, I mean, that's...
Yeah, and that's a fair caveat, I think. But I think that just in general, we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to get clarity with the planning commission so that we can keep moving the process along with some assurance on our side that we know the direction that the planning commission wants to go. And how that might, how that might sort of manifest itself is, we're, we're meeting with you almost every other meeting, so your planning meetings, obviously you guys are meeting on your own, the other meeting. So there may be moments in other meetings where you guys have to continue the conversation with staff, and that's fine. That will happen.
I, I think, and I'll jump on that again as well, we have a line item on every meeting or on our, on our scheduled meetings to do follow-up. So we may be in a point where we may not be ready to vote on something tonight, but I think we should commit to voting on that at the next meeting and closing it off and not, not letting it carry over. Unless it's really drastic, I would ask that us as a group commit to this closure of each topic. If not on the night we discuss it, then on the subsequent meeting where we have room for a follow-up discussion. I don't think we should let these drag out, unless there's an absolutely solid reason to do so. But that way we can, we can not let something get to cycle for a full month before we get back to it.
We would appreciate that, cuz I think again, that would make it, just make it work. And it would be easier on staff too, to make sure that we're all sort of moving this in the, in the same way. Does that make sense Ned? Cuz I know you've, you've got, you wanna drive a lot of this, I don't want, I wanna make sure that this is...
No, I, I, no, I think, I agree it's important. I think we, wherever we can, we need to, to act then, so that we don't lose the thread. I think, you know, we need to keep, keep that going. And even sometimes, you know, two weeks or four weeks, we, you know, we...
That's okay.
The rest of our life interferes.
The goal should be to, to close each subject out the night that we discuss it. That should be our goal. But we do have time built into the next meeting to do a follow-up. So I don't think we should vote, because if we're not ready to vote, we don't vote.
No, no, absolutely. And I think some, in some of the meetings, some of the, if you look at some of the tasks, like architecture for example, and uses, actually, we're anticipating two work sessions with you on those particular topics, cuz we know there're gonna be a lot more things to deal with. And, and I'll also will say, and I think you could see it from the previous work that we do in Phase 1, we're flexible about this. So if we have to reassess some of this as we move along, we can work with staff to do that, that's not... We're trying to map a road, provide a roadmap, so that we're all working off the same roadmap. But if we need to reassess that roadmap because of other external factors, then so be it. Going into sort of the next part of this, I mean, one of the things, one of the, one of the assumptions we are making in, in this process is that the goal, the regulatory framework goal for this outcome of this project is going to be some new code that will have more visual accompaniment to allow for you to communicate architectural character and form and some of the other things that were sort of brought forward in the ETC Next draft plan. So we're making an assumption, I think it's a well-educated assumption, we've already had some discussions around, but that the, what, what the regulation that you're going to create's gonna look like is not gonna be what you have today. It is going to be more informative and visually informative to the outcome you're trying to achieve. So we built in some process around creating the graphics and the sort of supportive materials that'll help you do that. Obviously, the plan was written to provide a good starting point for that, but there will be some additional visuals that we may have to create to allow this to happen. And then the last thing I'll say is, and Sharon, please jump in after and make my point. The last part of this is the regulations part of this, is we also including in that housekeeping, we're calling it. And Sharon can speak to this at length, but we have not found a code in our lives, I've never seen a code yet that couldn't, couldn't do with a little pruning. And that's the case with yours. There are things in the code today that just, we know by virtue of time, or, you know, things have changed that probably need to be looked at. Our job will be to identify some of those things. And that's where staff will come in, I think, in large measure, to help us, will identify what those things are, so that they can work with you as well, to sort of get, get through some of those housekeeping items. Wanna add something to that?
Well, yeah, I would say that both the zoning districts that we'll be proposing as part of this project don't exist in isolation from the rest of the town. And the district tables, or however they end up being, don't exist in isolation of your other zoning and subdivision regulations. So part of that audit is to make sure that any changes that we make in this section are reflected elsewhere in the ordinances.
Unintended consequences are not what we wanna try to get to.
And, and that ranges from looking at the allowed uses. If we decide that you don't want them in the center districts, then we need to make sure that they're accommodated somewhere else. Looking at some of the subdivision standards and things like that, to make sure that they're, everything's consistent across the board. And that actually takes more thought than you normally think when you're just starting with a bylaw amendment. So that's why we proposed a full audit of the regulations in relation to what we're proposing under the master plan.
And then the second part of that is, the other thing that's really important in there is the, is the development of some model research. So we're gonna come back to you, and this'll be something we'll probably do relatively soon, is come back with you, to you with some ideas, models, that you can see of what we think the regulation can become. Because visually, and just sort of, you can sort of feel it. Cuz I think that's helpful for, you know, if you have an idea what the end goal might be in mind, it helps you, as we have these conversations, sort of make sure, okay, I see where this is going, I got a roadmap, and I also got sort of a reference point. So one of the thoughts was we'd actually come back with some, some model regulations. Again, not, we're not gonna copy them or use them necessarily as, as code, but to help you see the pathway forward.
I would say too, that the master plan, we recommended a hybrid approach based on the feedback we got originally. So, you know, and that range is, what we looked at ranged from a full like form-based code, cuz we were asked to consider that, which would be a totally new model for the community. But again, it's something that we can present in terms of what that would look like, to going back to just updating what you have now in terms of your zoning district tables and your design review overlay district. And I think what we're proposing is that we look at a combination of those two that's specifically tailored to Essex. So that it's both familiar in terms of how you use it in the future, but it also incorporates a lot, as Mark said, a lot of the design elements that will be new under the proposed regulations.
Yep. And the one thing I think, you know, certainly welcome any planning commissioner members' input, but the one thing you should always be asking us is, is if you don't understand something, or it's not clear, or you sort of, you're feeling like you're just not getting it, let's talk about that. Because at the end of the day, you have to know it. And our job is to make this your regulation, not our regulation. So it really, you need to be comfortable with it, you need to feel like you can, you know, in the future, apply it, you know, clearly and uniformly with, with consistency. And if it's not clear through this process, then I don't think it's gonna get any better afterwards. So let's try to head those things off at the pass, so to speak. Any questions so far?
The one thing I just wanna mention is, we didn't really talk about public input into the process, cuz we had hoped we got a lot of that as part of the master plan. And we are using that master plan as a guide for this. But in terms of this process, at minimum, you know, the public can participate in the planning commission's work sessions. And once this is done, the bylaws such as they are will exist in a draft form, so there'll also be time for public input after this process. So I just wanna make sure that people don't feel like they're cut out of the discussion.
Sharon, Darren, is, or Martin, we thought about like fire testing some of these things once we get a form taken, going to like Paul Leary or somebody and say, "What, what would you do with this? You know, where would, how would this break? I mean, what could you, how would you, you know, how'd you interpret this? Could you do something that we weren't looking for?"
I think that Paul, you know, Paul was on the, on the steering committee for the ETC Draft, and I think he did provide a very valuable role.
I'm just wondering, like in relation to unintended consequences. I don't know that we, I'm sure you guys can, but it would be, it would be worth it, in my mind, to have somebody who hasn't been doing this, to look at it and see what they could do with it.
Yeah, no, I think that's a very good suggestion. And that's actually pretty common. I mean, you know, obviously, sometimes that's, that's the engineering department in the community, or a town, you know, town road crew, you know...
We've found that a number of times, you know, we wanted, we asked for this, and all of a sudden, "Oh, you asked for this, but now you're allowing this, because of the way you asked for this."
I think the only, the only caveat I would put out there, again, it's not, it's not, I think it's the, the, the feedback you want needs to be focused, I would think, would need to be focused on, do you understand what our intentions are? Right? Not necessarily, if you're asking a question about the consequence of the intentions, that's a different matter, because that goes back to the planning commission's purview, like you guys wanna regulate.
So I, I, I see that, and I'm not too worried about how to ask it yet, because if we wanna, basically, I wanna see if somebody can break it.
Right.
As simple as that. How we ask...
How can you get around this?
Yeah, well, I don't even wanna say get around it, because I wanna, it's more like, you're focusing, you know, what, what was our goal with this, what was our intent? Is that, you know, is our, is our intent valid? Or is the way we're crafted it valid, or is there a loophole? Or is there a, something that we're gonna have to live with for 50 years or 100 years because of something?
Or is there something that's really beyond... Is, are we doing something that's so unrealistic that people are just gonna throw up their hands?
Yeah, I'm not looking to get granular on it, I just would like, if, if in this process, there's an opportunity to fire test these concepts with, I don't care who it is. You know, we've seen a lot of people come through. Paul's been part of this from the beginning, that's why I threw his name out. But just as a, as part of our process, so...
We can certainly, at some point, ask Paul as a member of the steering committee to comment.
I would say we get pretty well-formed, maybe in the, like the public, closer to the public comment section sort of thing, but anyways, that's, that's...
No, it's a very good question, that's a very good suggestion, Chairman. I think the other thing I would say is that there's also all these other little elements that were sort of breaking this down. There may be times in this process where you want like site criteria, for example, maybe wanna invite some certain folks in to be part of the conversation around this. Because at the end of the day, exactly right, I mean, at the end of the day, you guys have to be comfortable that this is going to do the job you want it to do to achieve the vision you've established. At that, so if you need, if you need additional eyes on this to help make me comfortable with that, that's a great thing to do. And the good news is, we have a, we have a pretty good roadmap. I think we can, we can give people enough notice and say, you know, John, for example, you know, "We're having architectural discussion on the 28th of February next year, could you be here for that?" Cuz you would have, John, you'd have some thing to say that would be useful to hear.
Not to put a lot of overhead on it, but just, I think that would save us some grief.
Yep. The other thing I would say on that point is, and, you know, you know, there is, I think, built into this some moments where there may need to be some pause and reflect as well. So we just need to be working with staff to, to do that. And it's our intention to work very closely with staff throughout this project process, because we want, again, at the end of the day, we want staff to be as equally comfortable with understanding where this regulation's gonna go, so that they can provide you guys eventually with the best input as to how development is achieving the objectives. Okay. So I think that's the roadmap discussion. I think what'd be good to do now is be to, maybe we can just sort of focus a little bit on the, on the district boundaries. Could you bring up, I think it's page 54 of the draft?
24 or 25.
Sorry, 24. That's the one. Alright. Yep. So as you may recall, from April, we had, one of the, one of the kind of constructs within this planning process was to, was to break the ETC up into some neighborhoods. And for the parlance of our, of our conversion from a plan to zoning regulations, the idea would be that, that these neighborhoods will transform themselves somehow into districts, zoning districts. Now, whether they co-opt existing zoning districts, or they become their own zoning districts, that's hopefully something we'll have a conversation around. But the idea was that, you know, we, we felt that the ETC wasn't one place, that there wasn't one, you know, one district here, there was unique characteristics within the entirety of it, and that there may be some value in breaking it down into some pieces, so that we can capture some of that variation and variety. That's actually what's going on today, cuz there's obviously different zoning districts in the ETC. but, um, I think that this planning process resulted in maybe a little bit better clarity as to, um, where maybe some of those boundaries were going to be. We did have some discussions, as you will recall, about the conservation recreation district. That was probably the one that was the most, uh, discussed, uh, with the, the planning commission. There was some concern about the, the conservation recreation district in part because of, of, there's property ownership issues related to that. Uh, there was concerns about, um, sort of whether that was going to, um, not allow it this part of the ETC, and this is, this is, uh, Tower Road for Old Stage Roads, or comfortable where we are. Um, there was concerns that, that there wasn't enough, um, opportunity there. That discussion also, as you may recall, brought into the, into the discussion, uh, the fact that we know there are a lot of wetlands on that particular area, and that the, the, our consensus, again, whether this is, uh, the planning commission's desire or not, our, our consensus was that there wasn't a lot of development potential there anyway, just because of the natural resource constraints that exist. That being said, I do think that coming up with some, um, discussion around that would be useful. Because, again, if that, if that, if we decide to not even include it in the new districts of the ETC, that's an option. Um, you could just say, well, that's gonna revert to the underlying zoning, and, and that'll be it. Um, or we could change the boundaries and adjust them accordingly, or we could stick with the plan and, and, and deal with that. Um, just to be, get everybody reoriented a little bit too, in terms of the districts. So, we have the mixed-use district, mixed-use, um, south district, which is here, which includes the bulk of the Essex Town Center, Essex Center, shopping center, and, and, uh, the rest of that real estate. And we also have the mixed-use north, which was across the, across, uh, fifteen. We have the residential district, which encompasses the, the bulk of the traditional single-family residential development, as well as lands on the, uh, this side of, of Old Stage Road. And then we had the, uh, still never found a great name for this, but the transitional commercial, uh, district, which is basically where the Price Chopper is, and, and it's the, it's the interstitial land between the historic center and, um, the mixed-use and residential area. So, this is that.
It's brown.
It's brown, yeah. What does brown do for us? We don't know. We're gonna find out. Um, but the idea was, we, we recognized in the planning process that there was a very distinctive, uh, you know, historic center. Obviously, that's already codified in, in, in zoning. And there was this, and there was this, this, you know, area in between, uh, what we could argue is a very, you know, very mixed-use environment from this historic center. So, there was this sort of interstitial land that had characteristics of commercial development, but also some potential for residential infill. And some potential adaptive reuse of existing buildings from residential use to non-residential use. And so, we felt that it had to, it, it seemed to be evolving.
And now it exists in several districts. The idea was to consolidate it, the zoning districts that exist within that area, to make them work better together.
Right.
And integrate the development process in that area.
And part of the, part of the, the impetus for that was, you know, there's a lot of curb cuts on fifteen here. And the idea that if we actually brought it all onto one neighborhood slash eventual zoning district, we could have a little bit better control over how we provide access to these properties as that evolution continues. Um, as Dana mentioned, you know, the connectivity across fifteen was a big issue, and will continue to be a big issue. And you guys have already taken steps with the green belt and other, uh, efforts to make, to, you know, to facilitate better crossing of, of fifteen in this area. Uh, there's a little more definition, Old Stage Road's got a crossing point, there's a, there's a little more definition to it. When you get into the transition neighborhood, it was just, it's been kind of left to its own devices, it's kind of evolved as it's evolved. So, there was a, I think, a re- a good rationale from the connectivity issue to bring the, to consolidate the district around, uh, the, those different districts into one, then hopefully through this regulatory process, speak a little bit more clearly as to, um, how do pro- adjacent properties develop? So, they provide one curb cut that shares access to both lots, and, and that we limit curb cuts, and that we, we take a look at the uses that are there, and make sure that there's not uses that are actually, um, uh, you know, work against you relative to having a lot of curb cut use, like, things like drive-through banks, for example. Again, not to say that we're gonna, you know, not say drive-through banks, but that is a use that does drive the need for access. So, that was kind of the rationale for that. Um, and then the bulk of, you know, the bulk of the, of the southern part of the, um, ETC is conservation land. And we don't really see any particular need to, um, modify that uh, very much, other than potentially, uh, again, taking a look at it in terms of how it speaks to things like recreation. There could be some improvements in the language around the uses that are allowable. And, you know, again, again, more of a modernization of the, of recreation versus saying recreation's not already being used in some of those areas, because it clearly is. But recreation in twenty eighteen is not the same as it was in nineteen eighty-eight, you know, or nineteen seventy-five, for that matter. So, that's just some things that you wanna point out.
Well, just that, um, the current zoning, and, and you, we sent you the, kind of the evaluation I did of the proposed against the current zoning. But the current zoning is based on the ninety-one master plan, and back then, a lot of this area was undeveloped. I think what we've tried to do in this is basically, well, one, reflect the pattern that has developed since then, to recognize that. Uh, but also to allow for a little bit more development, especially in the mixed-use north and the expanded residential north of that. Um, so, the boundaries were defined basically, both in terms of the vision of the master plan, but also to recognize what's happened on the ground since nineteen ninety-one.
Can you clarify for me, what I would call north is the area that's sort of the yellowish?
That is north, up is, up is north, yes.
Yeah.
And I, is that, that, is that part included in what you're talking about?
It's, this, this is a district, a neighborhood within the ETC, yes.
Yeah, residential.
North, you're talking about the.
Yes, mixed-use.
Well, both the purple and then the yellow above that is new too. Right now, it, it stops.
Yeah, stops at Old Stage Road.
Road. So, it allows for a, a little bit of new development. Um, the other thing we looked at was relationship to the sewer core, obviously, because in the areas where you do want more dense development, that'll need to be supported.
We pause this for a second. Um, if any of you have questions, please don't hesitate. Right now, this is really, it were entertaining questions when you have them. I don't want you to lose it. Paul was a great example. Do you have a question? Ask, because we're apt to lose it if, if we forget. So, hang on, Paul, right behind you.
Are you, are you the same person that was at the May meeting? You had an orange, bright orange jacket on, and I watched the whole thing. Were you here in May?
I was here all year. Thank you.
I want you to know from nineteen ninety-one to now, there's so many changes. I'm in the green and brown area, uh, next to Saxon Hill.
Okay.
And we are not nineteen ninety-one, we're a very heavily-used recreation area, year-round.
Yep.
So.
Great.
Keep going.
Um, to Paul, uh, I think that the issue is whether or not this should be mixed-use north, or mixed-used west, or mixed-use northwest, or mixed-use left or right, I think there's, there's a.
We just, we need to differentiate between those two areas.
Yes, we do need to differen- yeah, and let's talk about that for a second, because that, that is, I think that's a really important point. We did articulate in the discussion in the, in the draft master plan, a fairly different land use pattern in the
Southern.
the southern portion of the mixed-use district versus the northern portion of mixed-use district. Um, just as a, just without getting into the, the weeds, I'll let Sharon do that.
I won't do the weeds, but I will say it relates to the vision and in zoning the purpose statement. So, when you're looking at these districts, I think in chapter six, it outlines the vision statement for at least four of them.
Yep, it does.
And so, that's what we would be translating into for zoning, an actual purpose statement that defines the reason for that zoning district, and why it's different than the other districts.
It just needs to be labeled separately. It needs to be labeled separately.
Yeah. So, characteristically though, I think what the idea was, that Dana was mentioning, that, um, architecturally taller, architecturally more diverse, probably. Um, architecturally larger mass, um, doesn't mean all those other things that are important don't get ignored, but just generally speaking, more density here, less density here. Uh, probably a greater proportionality of residential versus more mixed use here. Um, that's kind of some of the characteristics of that. And the idea, the overall idea behind them is that they kind of work symbiotically in terms of supporting it economically, you know, val- valuable mixed-use environment. So that this area could provide a little more residential density to the whole of the ETC, to make any economic activity here better. And it's pretty close to walk, it's pretty easy to get to, all of those things with the right design, and, um, a, you know, a consistency of applying pedestrian spaces and all that would make this a very functional, uh, living environment, um, relative to the overall ETC. But we felt like, given the location, um, its prominence to the fifteen, and its proximity to some of these natural areas and such, that it couldn't, it couldn't be as dense as this, but it could certainly be more dense than it is today, if you, just as a kind of overview.
So, is there an overlay that you can do for the sewer core with this map?
Yep. I think actually this.
Unless, okay, I, living in the village, there's only a couple square yards, um, that aren't on the sewer core. Um, sort of thing. And so, we have everything that has, has sewer core, where I'm familiar with regulating. Just so you have that context. Um, so my question is, is that sewer core, in the history that I know of the town, has always been a stumbling block and, and halting block as to development and further expansion of any economic activity in the town, whether it be residential or commercial.
Yep.
So, unless there is a sewer map, okay, or what's going to be allowable sewer, uh, that goes with this at the same time, same map, that, we're talking about all kinds of things, because I can't make that assumption that one corner is gonna have, does a perk or not.
Right, no, that's a good point. So, just to be clear, on page, uh, seventeen of the Matt draft, uh. Just, just, I could, we can go back there after a second, but this portion of the ETC is actually in the sewer core. This land is in the sewer core.
Okay.
And your point, your bigger point, I think, is actually, there's been some very substantive conversations at the, at the April discussion, post-April discussion, uh, with the planning commission previously, about the issue of the sewer core. And I know there's been resolution of all those issues, but I think it was a fairly well-established premise at the onset of this project, that, um, it's kind of chicken and egg. That i- i- if you, if you want this vision to be realized, this vision can only be realized if the sewer core supports it. That was the fundamental mistake, one of the fundamental mistakes of the last master plan, was it didn't get the clarity around the need for aligning the sewer core with where you want growth. So, I think, again, to the, to, uh, sort of, let, acknowledge that the plan has actually had some value thus far, that conversation is starting and to happen, which is good. Um, the other thing I would say is that we have, and you can pull this up again, Darren, it's on page seventeen, but the sewer core does include the bulk of the, of the more dense areas of the ETC. The question that I think has not been answered yet is, how much allocation can be applied? In that, you know, the boundary is the boundary, that's important, but there's also the availability of capacity and the allocation of that capacity.
We've had a number of discussions on that, and I, I, I would like us not to get derailed with sewer capacities and, and future so forth, because that really, I mean, Dennis has done a lot of work on that. And to some degree, I think, related to your chicken and egg, you gotta, we kind of have to come up with a plan, and then work to try to enable it. So, we, the sewer has always been a, a factor. But it's not necessarily something we're gonna solve at this table, so I don't wanna get too deep into it.
Well, the, the only reason, Dusty, that I, I bring it up is that if you, you can plan to your heart's content, but unless you've got some reality, how far out is this plan going to go?
I understood.
Okay. So, I mean, it, it's, you know, we can have pie in the sky, and we can talk about a lot of different things. Um, is the vision ten years, the vision twenty-five, is it fifty, is it a hundred? So, you know, and, you know, and as, as Mr. Leary will definitely tell you, is how much is it gonna cost? Is depending on how much he's willing, infrastructure he's willing to put in. Any developer will tell you that, and I'm sure that they have, since you guys meet almost every week. Uh, it feels like in your skin, it's every two weeks, you know, when, you know, doing that. So, I mean, that should be a.
It, it definitely has been part of our discussion, is what, what, I mean, and we had, I think, the last time we spoke about this, it was a, quite a lively discussion about, um, you know, what's realistic versus what, you know, what do we wanna see versus what could we realistically see? Um, we're not gonna solve it here, but we are gonna potentially drive the conversation with Public Works and developers and so forth to set some of those targets. And Dana, if I'm missing a point, please jump in. But we're trying to drive, we're trying to drive change and not just maintain status quo, because status quo doesn't work.
Well, I think we are right here at the point where we need to consider the sewer core. Um, and I think that needs to be part of this process, and I think that Dennis needs to be brought to the table. And I think that we have to talk about allocation versus batteries, and the select board needs to be brought into this conversation. And if it's not here, when?
As a, as a, as a real practical example, and I think the point's a good one, but a real practical example, if, again, we're not saying this is the recommendation, but if we wanted to say, uh, to require a minimum density in any of these potential districts, right? We couldn't, I wouldn't feel comfortable proposing that unless I felt like there was a reasonable probability that a developer could actually get the sewer density they needed, because they wouldn't, they couldn't achieve. So, that would create a really useless zoning regulation, right? So, there is, I think there is, but I would agree with you in premise, that there is a little bit of chicken and egg. And I think we've gotta, we've gotta push this forward a little bit, so that you can feel comfortable that the, the, the.
We have to put something in front of engine, uh, you know, Public Works to, to set a target, can we get to it?
How do we get there?
Because otherwise, it's only gonna be, this is what we can do, this is what we have, we can't do any more than this. So, we've gotta find a way, how do we get there? We had this exact conversation of, you know, do we ask for what we, what we can have right now, or do we ask for, how do we get to where we wanna be? And that's, I think, the question that we're trying to get in front of Public Works.
And also, you know, this process is gonna happen at different tables at different times. And hopefully, some at the same time, but we're gonna be in meetings with Dennis and the select board. And so, Dennis and you guys are gonna have to go and talk to the select board. And the select board, hopefully, is gonna come to some of your meetings. Because in terms of integrated planning in Essex right now, it can't be this linear thing where no one participates.
We're gonna set up a ring.
In isolation.
A, a ring with ropes and pads and, and that's how we're gonna make these decisions.
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of different than the way we often do it, which is the planning commission does its thing. And then we take it to the select board, and it does its thing. Um, we really need to be more integrated this time.
Get out of the beefed mode.
But to, 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 to just make a big, very clear point, I think, and back to the districts and the boundaries of those districts, is that I think there does need to be a, there is alignment now on, on the, the way these lines are drawn today with the existing sewer core boundaries. So, there is, there is alignment there, which I think was, was purposeable on our part. We wanted to make sure that there was not a, not a gaping hole, like, we're not suggesting higher density in areas where at least the sewer core boundary didn't exist. So, I think that's something the planning commission should think about and say, in terms of, you know, that should be the way we approach the districts in the ETC. We want them to make sure they are respectful of either the way the district is drawn today, or perhaps how you think it should be redrawn in the future. That's, I think, that, to me, that's a very good touchstone to get to, is like, there's clarity around that.
So, I'm curious, uh, is there an overlay, first of all, that shows the existing zoning map?
We have not overlaid those yet, no, and that's, we will do that.
So, I think that's pretty critical, because I know, like, for example, that you're taking away some of the historic preservation area, and without being able to see that here, unless I'm literally pulling up the map on my computer here, doesn't care, it'd be good to have those discussions as to, like, okay, why was that decided, why was this decided? What, what is this gonna gain us? Like, the orange section there, you're basically combining what was previously the, the mixed-use commercial and the mixed-use planned unit development.
Yes.
It'd be nice to have that discussion, okay, let's, like, why are we doing that? And, and I think it, I don't know if it's expanding at all, it might be the same size combined, but that would be, I think that would be the kind of thing that would be a, a, a productive discussion.
So, you're absolutely right about the mixed-use, that was, that was. So you're absolutely right about the mixed use, that was, that was the intention, was to bring those two together, as Sharon was mentioning. There's a lot of overlap in those two zoning districts?
Yeah, and again, it's basically to integrate the planning and development of those areas better.
You have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, just like what he said in the red, that the brown area, you know, right along fifteen, where it's all sporadic neighborhoods and then business districts. Well, there's a lot of neighborhoods along Allen Martin Parkway, and all of Allen Martin Parkway residents use the green area for recreation. Not that you don't need a sewer core, you don't need a sewer, but when you're talking about blending, um, because of, it's not nineteen eighty-eight anymore, what is it gonna look like? I just wanted to comment that Allen Martin Parkway, Seth Circle, all that area, you know, by that, um, two eighty-nine, you know, that area, all the way to Saxon. It's like, we feel like we're one district, even though you have it divided between brown and green. I just wanna point that out. That all of us tend to use that green area for recreation and baby joggers.
I'm not sure that we're including that in this.
Well, I know, but I just wanted to give my two cents that, that, the, that, that part of fifteen, um, all the way to the Jericho line is a community. Is even though it's so sporadic with businesses and hell homes, that I just wanted to throw that out.
So if you can go to, uh, if you go to page four, I, I think I can walk through this early, easily.
Give me a sec.
Yep.
While we're waiting, is Pat, Patty, is that your name? Is your name Patty?
Patty, yes.
Yep, yep. So this is the, um, this is the existing zoning districts, and I think the point was raised, so just to get everyone, here's Butler's Corners here, fifteen, Historic Center. Can you blow that up just a scooch?
I can also, this is a little easier to see.
Yeah, that's better, yep, that's the one we had sent over to, yep. Okay. Uh, can you just zoom that up a little bit more on that? That'd be great. There we go. Um, if anybody's red, if anybody's red, blue, green color, I apologize. Um, just to give everybody a little bit, so this is, this is the inter, interchange, this is the existing Essex Town Center, here's that residential district, this is the center district, I believe. And so, one of the things that I think it's important to recognize, and this goes back to the point that Sharon was making at the beginning of this, is the unintended consequences of changing districts. The E, the ETC boundary itself doesn't line up with the zoning districts. They're not coincident, which, you know, again, in hindsight, twenty twenty, would have been nice to make that line up, but they don't. So there's actually an ETC boundary that does not actually line up with the existing zoning districts. So there are some interstitial areas outside of the ETC that would be the historic district, for example. That we're gonna find ourselves having to deal with the consequence of that. Um, there also is, and this, so this is the, uh, I forget the purple here, it's light blue. Mixed use, yeah, yeah. So this is already, this is the PUD mixed-use north, that's already basically zoned in some ways for that same use, but you can see it's the same as the balance of the, um, the Essex Town Center, and it's also the balance of what the Lang Farm property. So, there was a reason we came up with the idea of changing, sort of debt, reclassifying it, so that it had a different, um, characteristic. Um, the one big area where, sort of again, changing, looking at on, on fif- on Old Stage Road, is this parcel, these parcels here was looking at those as being contiguous to and near the ETC, but um, not currently as dense as they probably could be, and being able to provide some residential growth there. Um, recognizing there has been an investment in crossing and walkways and all of that to accommodate that. So, and then obviously, looking at the balance of this, this is the, the center district. You see the center district currently goes up, you know, quite far north. And that, that was part of the contention, discussion around whether that conservation-recreation district boundary made sense, because that, that was at the heart of that. The fact is, is that today it's called the center district, and we were suggesting that its, its planned intention was not consistent with the rest of the center district, that it had to, it was something else. Um, so I think that is a really important part of this conversation, and you can sort of see the balance of the, uh, the consolidation of these zoning districts related to that transition kinda came out of the, um, center district, came out of some of these other districts and-
Yeah, redefining.
Yep, residential business, which is this one here, and the-
It's a medium density residential.
High-density residential, I think, right, yeah. So there's a, it's, it's kind of recognizing that there's a, this patchwork of, of districts in this area, and it covers most of that land. The other thing I will say, the district boundaries that are presented on the, on the, in the draft ETC plan do follow property boundaries. We were very clear with the fact that we didn't wanna do the old, oh, we're a hundred feet into a property, and we're gonna have an arbitrary zoning boundary, because we thought that's, we know from our own experience, and certainly talking to staff, that's not usually a desirable thing. So, Altha helps orient people a little bit more about the, sort of the underlying zoning and how that kind of transforms.
I have a question on the property line. So, there's a bit of Matthewtown Forest, it sticks up to, and about fifteen. But that, um-
Right there?
Yeah.
Yep.
So that's in the brown area.
Yep.
Is that on purpose?
Um, can you go to the, the map? Make sure, the, just the ETC boundary map.
There's gonna, there's two, there's two other properties in addition to that, they're similar question.
Yes, I think, again, that was, I think that was a recognition of, of, um, the pattern that's evolved, and there is a sliver of land, you're right, there is a sliver right of way that actually-
It's a pretty gnarly ravine.
It is a gnarly ravine, yeah, and I, and I think that was part of the discussion, is that we didn't feel like there would probably be much development there anyway, but for the purposes of keeping the district's boundaries a little bit clearer, um, that it made some sense there.
So Mark, just to the left of where you were, right, about an inch to the left, there's a property that extends into-
Yes.
Right there.
Yep.
And then there's that long rectangular section right now, that the proposed boundary is cutting off, that does belong to that parcel, um, to the right.
Right here.
There's that one, and then on the other side of the street, uh, the other side of fifteen, the north side of fifteen, that extends both, half in the brown and half in the green. So we've, you know, we're, if we go this way, we have to acknowledge that we're splitting properties.
Yep. Yeah, I thought there was a, we'll have to take a look at the zoning data, but I thought there was a pretty good, there was a boundary there, maybe there was a-
Cause in the, in the previous one, you can show the, um, both of those were contiguous in the, the zones that they were in, both of those two parcels.
So, in, in general, though, I guess, let's, let's kinda walk through these if we can in, in turn. Um, you know, the, the question on the, on the center district is, you know, I think the center district actually goes over, well, this is, I think, pretty consistent with the center district. I got that right?
We extended it farther down.
We did extend it further down, right, we did. And that was partly to recognize the fact that there was already some historic properties that were not incorporated in the original. There was a question that came up one point earlier in the discussion about actually going a little, even a little bit further, cause people felt that this was kind of the gateway. And there was a discussion about, well, it wasn't technically in the ETC, but it might be good to, from a zoning perspective, incorporate that in, because then at least the character will, will, you know, it'll kinda flow along with the character. I'm not sure what the planning commission thinks of that, I think there's some merit to that. Um, and then as, as it goes, as it goes to the west, um, this was one we really had a, it's kind of a, it was tough to figure that out, but we looked at the, our, our analysis, we just looked at the, sort of the character here, and there kinda was a breakpoint as you got to the shopping center, where, you know, there was some remnants of historic structures, but it did sort of peter out, the further west you went, and, you know, it's not to say there isn't a few, there are a few properties here, but very, less so. And it got less, it, it got more, uh, less intact. Um, so there was a point where we just, we sort of looked and said, okay, based upon the characteristics of the, of the structures and the, the form, and you can, you can kind of almost see it, because all, all the buildings sort of line up. You know, there's a fairly consistent setback from the road, um, the scale of them is pretty similar in here. And as you get to this point, this, I think this is, um, was it the pizza place, somewhere around there? Yeah, yeah, Oogie Hoagies, yeah. There's somewhere right around there, there's a transition. And that transition sort of got into this trend, this is where it became the transition commercial. Um, and some of these other uses actually have subsequently turned to, there's the, you know, there was the Tempo Place that now is now a commercial enterprise continued, so there's some things that are, there's a more commercial orientation to some of this. So, that was the rationale for that. I think the, the, you know, again, then looking at the, the underlying zoning, there was a, you know, the, the, the center district as it originally was encompassed, you know, encompassed to all sorts of, all sorts of this, but I, it really felt like it needed to line up better with, with the historic center itself, and also where the overlay, the scenic, the design overlay kinda fits.
Yeah.
And that's another consideration in this, is that there's already a design overlay for the historic center, and we wanted to make sure that that wasn't sort of misaligned with the zoning itself.
So if we were to, if we were to extend ETC section more southeasterly on fifteen,
Yep.
off the top of your head, what, what, I mean, I, I wouldn't wanna introduce another, another type of zone, but what, what group, what zone, what color would you?
This here?
Yeah.
I would actually continue that with the center district, honestly, I think there's a good argument to be made that as you come on fifteen, and you get to this, the, you know, they get to this intersection.
You're talking about the Sand Hill Road.
Sand Hill Road intersection, right, as you get to that intersection, you know, there are a few properties there, but I think just characteristically, I mean, you're seeing the historic center, so I think it's a, it's a gateway, it's an arrival point.
Well, and there are some historic houses right along with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Breaking point.
Diane?
Well, the same thing goes with Brown River with the school district. I mean, the school is up there, and the houses across the dis- on Big Spree Hill Road are, um, also historic across the street. So it, it's actually, stands up, if you really wanted to get to it, to, I'm not sure what the little short one is. Is it Iris, or whatever it is up there?
Yeah, Iris Street.
I mean, it goes up and, oh, yeah, I recognize a part of it's a swamp or whatever else, but, um, it, but it's still part of the historic center as opposed to, um-
Anyway, this might, sorry, Mike, I'm wondering why my pointer's not working, it's eating my water bottle. Alright, yeah. Yeah, that's a good, you know, I think that's, that's a good ques- I mean, again, this depends on what, going back to the earlier discussion, making new districts, if we decide we wanna make new districts and give them the definition, give them a purpose that actually aligns with your, the goals, and what are the intended, unintended consequences of expanding it out beyond its current piece? I think that would be something we can look at, but, you know, I would, I would argue that the arrival points into the Essex Town Center from these directions are very important. And the school is a very important sort of, I mean, you know, to me, I live in Fairfax, so I drive down one twenty-eight, and this is when I first noticed, I'm in Essex Town Center, this is my first point of arrival, really. So I think there is a good argument to be made to say extending it to here, and then, uh, you know, the question where at the school, that's, there may be a little bit of discussion around that, but the school is a good reference point in my mind.
Well, at least the, at least the buildings across the street, and I view them as being, are the historic Essex Center district. Historic Essex, Essex Center district.
Which buildings, Dana, you're referring to?
Um, there's a building across from the school that was part of the, um, s- the, oh-
The school?
The school, the school-
But that's on Big Spree Hill.
That's on Big Spree Hill. Right, up there. So which is why I'm saying it, it almost needs to go up to, is it Iris? Or, or, or up that?
Up to here?
Yeah, up to there.
Where, where's the old railroad bed? Does that-
That's right through here, isn't it?
Yeah, that's up from Towers, isn't it? Talking about the bed?
Doesn't it go, doesn't it go up farther?
That's right here, isn't it? Isn't that right there?
No, I'm not sure, I've never-
I think it is, it's right there.
Yeah.
So I, you know, again, I think one of the, again, if you look at the, the, I think this is a good time to look at the, at the, you know, what actually has evolved versus what you wanted to evolve discussion, and I, I don't know, you know, there may be a historic house or two, but I think the character of this area is decidedly not, um-
Historic.
Historic. Historic would be like the nineteen fifties, I suppose, but you know.
No, nineteen, late eighties.
Eighties, okay, yeah, it's not quite there yet. Right, yeah, yeah, so I just think it's like, you know, re- you know, it, the exercise is not always about just capturing all the historic buildings, but also, but trying to find, where do they come in assemblage, you know, to sort of say something, and also where there might be redevelopment or changes over time that you wanna sort of make sure, don't make, uh, unintended consequence, a really bad outcome there. And I don't know if, again, I don't, I mean, I can see the school's not probably likely to change in the near term, but is, as a, as a way of, of, of demarcating the arrival point, I think that's a good ref- that's a good reference point on a main road into town. Um, again, cause one of the things that the zoning regulations can do is talk about what happens when you get to these gateways, and if somebody does do something, there could be language that says, you gotta take some care in the design of your improvement, because we, we have a gateway, so we don't want you to turn it into something that doesn't fit that character. So I think, I mean, I, I don't know what the planning commission's purview is, but I think there's a good argument to be made to sort of extend it to the south, to this fifteen Sand Hill Road intersection. And also probably to carry it further on one twenty-eight to at least the school, at least in a corridor along this, and try to find the right property boundaries that fit that.
You've got a, you've got a natural, a natural, uh, uh, point as you come around the corner, going west. When you first come around the corner, yeah. I mean, that's, that's where it opens up.
And this land is, I mean, this is, boy, every, every spring I go down through here, it's pretty wet, so I'm not sure there's gonna be a lot happening, but-
No, above it, there might be.
If they're above it, there might be, yeah, yep.
And it's, you know, the point to say, there's not a lot of development happening on that side, or not affecting much in terms of-
Unintended consequences.
Unintended consequences, and as you say, it's a good physical boundary, but it's a question of how far north and south do you go?
Yeah.
If you're trying to align it with property boundaries.
Cause these are pretty deep. These are pretty deep. They go back quite a ways. Okay, that sounds like some-
At the very least, I think the school, the boundaries of the school property would make sense, because that's not a, if you're looking for a demarcation, that's a, that's a reasonable start point, because it's not, it's, it's there.
Yeah. Um, the other one that was a little, you know, again, a little tricky, was figuring out the differ- the, the, the boundary between the, um, transitional commercial and the mixed-use south. Um, and it does, it does essentially line up with the boundary between the, um, business, residential business district. Um, I think it's pretty much the same line, I think it may be cleaned up a little bit. But I was, we, as we were looking at it, we certainly, you know, we could certainly see, you know, there's no reason to say that, that they could go into one or the other, I mean, there's sort of a, it's kind of an arbitrary line in some ways, but that was one area of transition that we, we noted.
So, what's gonna happen with Sabre, if we make this change?
Not much. Um, I think that, you know, I mean, right now, the only, there is a high, was it high, high-density residential is in, is right here.
It's just south of fifteen, basically up north of Sunset, going out to the bike path, or rather, Sabre Road, so.
Sabre is medium density right now.
Yep.
Yep. So, uh, if I can point with the mouse, apologies. Um, this is Sabre Road. Thanks, Mark. Um, and then, where, where you have the boundary right now is the edge of the, uh, residential business district.
Right.
So, sorry, the high-density residential's on the north side of that.
So, yeah, so Sabre gets rolled into, into the, in, into mixed-use south, but- in terms of density, you know, it's probably actually up, upzoning it relative to density and all like, and, but it is upzoning it from relative, from zoning perspective, and providing a little more, uh, flexibility to uses now. It's built out largely, so I don't imagine that would-
necessitate a lot of changes, but-
over some time, that could allow for some redevelopment or until-
There's the field down by twenty-nine.
Yeah, down here, yep.
They do have certain open space requirements on that property because of the, um, subdivision, but it, and I haven't found some, much clarity as far as what that could be used for. It seems like there's a little more potential development even today, so to upzone it might lead to a little more than even what scale is there, but we'd have to look at that specifically once we get to the density and the design parts of it. So that might be a question we revisit as far as boundaries, if we find that that's unsatisfactory.
That did come up in some conversations, as I recall, with, you know, like, the concern about, you know, the field and its value as a, you know, quasi-recreational space. I know there was some discussion at one of the public meetings about that. Um, I think it's important to remember, recognize that, um, and again, I think that Matt, the draft tries to do this in, in a number of instances, is, is that there is a hope that there will be recreation and open space throughout the ETC, it may have a slightly different form than what is existing today, or what might be and, you know, perceived as being recreational space, but, um, there would still be recreational- And, you know, perceived as being recreational space, but, um, there would still be recreational space in any of these districts of, of different types. And open spaces and such, so, you know, whether this remains as a, a field or does get adaptively reused as to, or redeveloped into something else. Um, I, my, legit, my presumption is that there would be some requirements to make sure that there is functional. Practical open space associated with that, albeit probably not an open meadow.
There's another lot though, too, Bernie Yendo, that comes off Sabre Road.
Yeah, that one there?
Yeah.
This guy, yep. So that one, you know, this is the, there's, I think, and these, these also did come up as well, and we, we specifically put them into the recreation conservation. I think as a result of some conversations with the rec director, um, about that, about the idea of wanting to make sure there was some provision for. Uh, future recreational opportunities within the E T C that may be more aligned with the, the community's recreation objectives.
He's, he's been an active landowner who's been looking to develop his property.
So I think that's, that's a question that the planning commission should think about is, is, and we can come back with. Um, you know, maybe next time do the overlay of that so you can see that a little more clearly, but, um, that would be something I think we could, um. You know, discuss more is, should this be, um, should this be more associated with the mixed use north or s- south, or should it be? Something else? Cause right now, it's, it's, uh, right now, it's largely a medium density residential, I think, is the bulk of it.
Also, to go back to the question of our, how are we aligning the district boundaries with the property boundaries? The area in the south part of the Sabre, um, development is, uh, the, the, the boundaries don't align with property. The zoning boundaries don't align with the property boundaries exactly because we decided that those steeper vein areas are not developable even if. They were part of that property and part of the mixed use, so that's why that decision was made, correct me if I'm wrong.
You're right, yep.
As far as where those, you know, open rec, you know, recreational, um, pieces are, that can also. Um, you know, I don't know if we wanna look at those too, as far as where those property boundaries are and make sure that they're not spot zoned.
Yeah, yeah, we don't wanna, yeah, I think that, you know, there's a couple of things, it's sort of, as you look at it with some time behind us, I think. This is one where there was some accommodations trying to be made to reflect, um, some of the natural resource constraints, but also some of the goals the community had for. Recreation, so I think we're trying to find the right way to do that, um, but, you know, it, it may be. Um, I think, I think bottom line is, I think there was a recognition that there would be upzoning, if you will. On portions of the property that may come at the expense of downzoning at others, but the net effect would basically be. The same level of density and say, or maybe slightly more level of density, so just where that density is applied.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be good to have more density for Sabre, um, it'd be good to have some connectivity to, to town forests.
Yes, yeah, and that certainly did come out in a lot of the conversations that we had with folks about. You know, like this is, if you're gonna have a trailhead, it would be nice to have a trailhead down here so that. You know, and that could, again, back to the open space requirements for any sort of higher density use, that would be a very, very. Good example of a, of an open space, you know, them dedicating a trailhead to the town forest would be a very good thing to get out of that process.
Okay, so let's, 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 let's pause and circle for a few minutes, um, as I understand it, our charge this evening. Is to sort of give you guys some clarity on whether or not we agree or like this or want, what we want out of it.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I wanna, I wanna put some framework around this so we're not just chewing on this endlessly all night. So just sort of as a, as a, taking the temp- general temperature, what is the commission, Diane, I'd like your opinion on this as well. What does the commission feel about this approach and this general structure, knowing that we've, we've already talked about.
Probably.
Asking to have the, the town centers, not town center space, the, um. Historic area, whatever we're calling it, that wasn't what you, it is, okay. The historic district expanded to some degree, what do, what do folks feel about this approach so far? Ned, I'll start with you.
Uh, I, 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 I don't have any objections to it, and I think it's probably pretty good, I, I worry a little bit, uh. Where the dividing line and, and Mark referenced too, where, where that cuts off with the, uh, Brown. Commercial district in the middle there, I. And, uh, extending the historic district is fine, I think as we develop a plan, what we develop. For the historic district is actually gonna be one of the biggest, uh, challenges, uh, we have here, just because of the nature. Of, of what's in that area and, and, and how it could develop with, with traffic and everything else in there.
Okay.
But I, I think it's fine.
Tom?
Ditto.
You sure? Don't want you to lose your voice on this one. Josh?
I, I philosophically like the approach and I really like, and I think I was the one advocating for it actually, but the. Expanding the historic center southeast and just the whole idea of the gateway and then phasing up as you drive along fifteen, I'm very supportive of that. That concept, I like it a lot.
Great, Diane, what are your thoughts?
Um.
This is what happens when you come to our meeting, you get, you get put at the table.
All right, um, my personal opinion is that the historic center should be expanded to, to the gateway areas. Um, I think you should color in the properties that extend. Help here and here, and these guys is to appropriate colorations, I'm assuming this is. These are landforms enough to be developed versus the never ending ravine that's in there. So to make those reality is this show what you're looking at, um, you know, which. Which district, is it gonna be recre- recreational or is it gonna be the mixed use upgrade to Sabre? Um, and, and just bite the bullet and do it.
Jo- uh, John, I gotta remember.
Um, Ned, this is, this is definitely, uh, it's more of a learning experience. Zoning regulations and rules in general, I find myself not really knowing what I'm approving versus what was in place before. So that's just my perspective, I, I can appreciate all the work that's gone into already having discussions with what seems to be the appropriate people. That have that expertise to decide what we're cutting into and what we're expanding and whatnot, personally, I don't feel like. I can offer much in those areas unless I really dive into the weeds of the details, I mean, that's kind of what. I feel like if I was to review this in depth, I would look at the existing zoning regs, pull up, you know, medium density residential and see, okay, where are we. Changing that and then look at, you know, looking at the, what defines that today versus what we're defining in this paragraph here and seeing, okay, is that gonna match up? Is it gonna still do what the original intentions were and, and so on, so. For me, I feel like I'm just learning, I, 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 I think it's valuable and then what I'm seeing, I like what I see, but obviously a lot of work's already gone into this, so, but. Um, I don't have anything, I guess.
Well, I think you, you, you've identified a couple of points that I think are valid, one, you wanna see more about, you wanted to know that what, how the, what the comparison is. I think we mentioned that also is what, what are we gaining, what are we losing, you know, by this, that, it sounds like that's what I heard as you look for, really, what's the net gain and, and.
Yeah, and I think, you know, but, but from what I've seen in the draft plan. You know, it's totally different in how the planning is done, and I think that's, you know, that's intentional for a lot of good reasons. But it's hard for me to compare what, the way things were previously done when it's so drastically different to the new direction, and I know. That we're gonna get more into that with some of the later discussions, and I'm hoping it all comes together, but that's, again, I think it's just me being relatively new to the commission and.
Shu, I wanna remind us again, if, if, we can, we can say that we like something now, and if new information comes out further down the road, we can come back and revisit and say we wanna. Do something different, so I, I think your point of looking for more information or greater clarity down the road is fine. Shu?
Uh, generally, I, I like the layout, um, I'm a little, a little nervous about the, the area. To the northwest, uh, of Old Stage Road, you know, getting a lot of density there, but I understand we probably. You know, one of the things we have to consider in all this is that there's some available space there to get more density in this area, so. Just, I, just a little on the fence on that whole idea, um, as far as extending the historic, uh, center district, uh. I kinda like where the line is now, seems like a pretty good delineation, I totally agree, there's a lot of buildings and properties that are, that are, you know. Extending out towards Sand Hill Road and, and maybe even a little further that could be included in there. But, um, you know, we, we gotta think about, you know, what, what are the implications of the, of the regulations that we're gonna put in, in that area, you know. Are we scooping up some, some, some historic buildings or historic properties? If we extend it, what are the consequences of that, um, on the rest of those properties? Like you wanna, this is kind of a nice delineation where it is, I think the gateways are good on Alder Lane there. So I'm not opposed or, or anything, I'm just saying I think it's okay the way it is.
Okay.
Actually, I'm sorry, one, one point to that, and that came to mind, is, is, do we know if there's a cost associated with changing anything? So like, to, to John's point, if we think something is kind of okay right now. Is, are we, is there a cost associated with making even a minor change to that, whether it be redefining that area? You know, and I'm talking like hitting costs and, you know, everything that's.
You could say cost to whom? Cost to us, cost to landlords?
To the town essentially, whether it be through having to redefine, you know, that area and, and whatnot, and if we, if we look at the cost versus benefit. Of, you know, is it really worth our time and effort to make that change, we may decide quickly that, no, it's not, there's, let's not mess with this, let's leave that piece alone. So, and same with like, some of the densities, like when we look and we say, oh, well, this could use more density. Well, do we, when we look at the current regulation, is it even coming close to what the hell it's regulated right now, and if it's not, are we, is it worth our time and the money? Associated with changing that right now, that's.
Yeah, if I might, if I might share just to, I think you raised a really good point, uh, you know, there was a, there is an ar- there is a, a discussion to be had. As to whether or not you need to reg- you need to change the, uh, you know, the existing zoning districts in the entirety. I mean, you could make an argument, one could make a reasoned argument that, uh, just doing the mixed use north and south. This district probably has the biggest bang for your buck, because those are the areas where there's probably more likelihood for redevelopment. There's probably more likelihood for higher densities, where some of the architectural discussions that the master planner brings forward will have the most. Probable value, I'm not saying that that's the case, but you bring up, I think, a reasonably good point that you could decide that the existing center district boundary and. Underlying zoning and everything else is, maybe with some tweaks, is perfectly fine. And that there's, you know, more resources put or more effort put towards some of the other boundaries, so I think that is something to be thinking about as we move along with this process.
Just one little point, um, what's funny about this map is that this looks so big. But if you look at what the town has designated as its growth center. If we were to look at this in context of the, of the town as a whole, it's not that big. And, um, so we don't wanna make the mistake of under densifying this area. This is where your services and your infrastructure are, so we need to keep mindful of that, and then if. You know, if you were thinking as a regional planner, then it gets really crazy, I mean, this is, this is where it's appropriate to grow. Not only in the town, but in the region.
Another good point to re- just echo Dana said, the other thing that happened as a result of this draft is we've actually made the E T C smaller. It used to go all the way up to the, to the apex of Tower Road and Old Stage Road, so, again, to the point of, of rec- and that, and that was partly to recognize the fact that. Well, we really don't wanna build out Essex to the peak there, but also by making it smaller. And concentrating the density in a tighter area, some of those other sort of side objectives like being, improving connectivity and. Increasing the likelihood that the economic activity can be vitalized and stuff would actually improve, so that.
Which is why I agree with that.
Hang on, I, I just wanna, cause I, I just wanted to go back on this for a second, cause. I'm in generally in favor of, of this, I, a couple of points have made up, I, I don't think we should be cutting properties in half. So we've got a couple of those properties, both north and south, that have extensions into, you know, they're crossing dual zones. Um, one of them's right near me, the other one's, um, across from, uh, across from my development. I, I'm, I'm concerned about expanding the historic district too much, I think we could say both sides of Alder Lane. Because there's historic structures and so forth, and it's, you know, you're not gonna do a whole lot on either side, it's a designation with, I, I don't see a lot of impact on that. I'm a little concerned with doing anything outside of the school property. Uh, on that side of one twenty, or on the south side of one twenty-eight, because that is, if it's school property, it's, it's covered anyways. Um, going too far close to, 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 uh, the Sand Hill intersection, we've got the Catholic Church on one side, but you've got a lot of. Relatively current residences, you know, they're not, they're not historic residences across the road from that, they are nineteen sixty, nineteen seventy vintage homes.
There are a couple that are older.
Understood, but that starts when you, once you get into the intersection at, right at the intersection of, of, of fifteen and, and Sand Hill. The other ones are, well, case in point, I mean, I just, I think it's, it's.
The only, the only other thing is that that is the, the Sand Hill Road intersection is a more natural break.
And I don't disagree with that, um, I don't disagree with that at all.
It's so busy.
But. But we're not talking about that, I mean, again, we're, but.
But, but visually, as you come into it, there's a, there's a change in, slight change in direction, so.
Right, so where does the, when the state project comes through to put lights in that intersection, what is that, what's the, the scope of that gonna be, so, I mean, we can pull up. Right up to where the intersection is gonna be and then we're gonna lose, again, this isn't a big area, how much of that are we gonna lose to the state? State A O T when they design the intersection, so how much benefit are we gonna get from that? Sharon?
Hi.
Well, I agree with Shu, I, I, I think the historic district should just stay where the boundary is.
The fact that we did reduce the E T C next doesn't quite seem, I don't know, sit right with me that we're gonna extend it. Other places and reduce it where it was, I, I think that might be a trigger for some people in those properties, but I think, um. I definitely like the idea of trying to keep, uh, reduce split zoning districts, but again, I just don't think. Are those, are those properties, um, in the historic district, are they on the historic register? I, I, I just think where it is, is, we, we had a discussion at one of the E T C next meetings where we were talking about the historic district and. You know, there isn't much there and wasn't.
So you got, you, you, you've got the Montessori school, you got the old Fred's I G A there, there within this designated historic district. Um, it's hair, hair appeal, all about hair, whatever it is now, but that was Fred's I G A.
Yeah.
Um, that's in.
Right.
So.
So to the Alder Lane, I think, uh, where it was, I personally liked the boundaries.
Also, you know, just because, uh, it's not part of the historic district, doesn't mean that that Route fifteen Sand Hill Road intersection can't be a gateway, it doesn't have to be. The historic gateway, it can still be an E T C gateway, so, it's another point to consider.
And I meant, people, a lot of bikers and stuff, you know, a lot of people would like, I don't go from Sand Hill Road. I'm on foot, I'm on bike, you know, we're all so athletic, it'd be a nice, you know, baby, people with baby joggers, you know, from that Sand Hill Road on fifteen.
Babies can't go that far, when you get them jogging, they only got a little feet.
My husband with our daughter went a five thirty pace on the stove bike path, I almost killed him. When our daughter was six weeks old, but anyway, but my point is, it would give some connectivity with all those neighborhoods. And I would, we would love to be part of it, that's all.
So the other piece that I'm, that I'm questioning on this, and I'm, it doesn't sit well with me, is to have those two little blips. Of the residential recreation in, that intrude into the conservation recreation, I'd almost just assume, just wipe that and call it conservation recreation. Uh, from my own personal point of view, I don't like seeing little blips, cause what are they gonna do with that different than this, it's the recreation being the key piece on that, in my point of view.
Is it differentiation Matthew Top Forest versus private?
I, I don't know the, I don't know where that delineation is, it's just. For, for, for clarity, I'd rather, and, and that just leaves a little blip in between the two, either make one parcel that's residential conservation. Or make everything conservation recreation, it, it would be my thinking on that, just for clarity, for the future people looking at this, and they're not having to go out there with a. Sex in it to try to find out where exactly it is and get a surveyor out and you're one foot into the recreation. Conservation recreation or you're one foot into the re- residential recreation.
So what were the unintended consequences?
So what would the unintended consequences be of that?
No residential in that spot. So again, that, I think Tom's question about, is that private or is that town forest? You know, does that mean, i- if, if that's the case, then make it all the same, um, whatever the, whatever Sabre is. And I just, it bothers me to see little, little, little isolated cells. Of one, one versus another, and I don't know the exact answer, but I'd, I'd almost rather see conservation, because we're, we're. Kind of.
On the flip side of that, on the flip side of that, though, say if, say if it was incorporated into the mixed use south. You know, there are, there are development constraints in that, that part of those properties, you know, there's just, there are constraints, right? So we, from a practical perspective, you're not gonna be able to put much there in all likelihood.
You might be able to use it.
But you might be able to use the density to apply into other parts, so there is some potential value of, of, you know, making that. You know, keeping it mixed use north because, or south, because you can apply that density, and then presumably that would become the open space or the. You know, I mean, you might end up getting the same result.
I, I would, I mean, that would, I would be agreeable with that, I just don't like seeing little blips. You know, I'd rather see, you know, as much contiguous.
I believe that is, that is the boundary of the forest, if I'm correct in my GIS data, that was in the forest, yeah.
In that, in that case, then I would advocate more making it be the same as the Sabre section. So you have, you could use the, you can use the, the density or whatever.
There's a, there's a logic to that, obviously, with that ownership pattern. Uh, where is the planning commission on, on this area here? Curious to see what your thoughts are. That right now is largely in the center district.
And we're considering that to be residential recreation?
Yep. So, i- you know, again, from, we'll, we're gonna work out density and all of those other things as we go, but from a master plan level. The idea was that this would not, this would be lower density and would not have the same characteristics as. Um, the transition or the historic center, there's, there's just lower density.
Yeah, again, there are a lot of wetlands and other physical constraints in there, the question was if we allowed residential using. Planning and development or something to be able to transfer the density. To allow higher density in the areas where it's suitable for development, but.
You could get some pockets of development, but not, you know, the whole thing is largely gonna be, remain as, as undeveloped.
Back to what Diane and John were both asking about, is, is that parcel, how much of that parcel, is the entire parcel within the sewer core or any of it?
Yeah, and actually, that's, that's a little more complicated, because I think they have a touch the sewer core.
Some of that, I think northern, the northern portion of that. I believe, I believe alls have a master plan on file that can't be executed because it doesn't have sewer.
Right.
And that's, I mean, so there is a master plan that, that includes a portion of that extending north.
Yeah, so this is in the sewer core.
That is in the sewer core.
Yeah.
So it's basically everything that we've got outlined in front of us, that's in the sewer core?
Um, yeah, the sewer core goes up here. Jod, does not include this tract here. It does include all of this, it does include this, it, it goes across the street, includes all this.
I thought the sewer core didn't go up Old Stage.
Yeah, it's on the page, uh, seventeen.
Well, the church was outside the sewer core.
Yeah, it's, it's only on one side.
It's on, so it's on the east. So that might lead us to, to that, that section on the northwest of Old Stage. That might want a different designation.
Seventeen seven?
Yep.
To allow for, you know, if the sewer core never expands to that, have it already mapped out with, for some use. Low density residential or whatever.
Yeah, so, yeah, so this is that property we're talking about.
Yeah.
And here's, this is Towers Road, Old Stage Road. So that additional expansion residential is not in the sewer core. The bulk of it is. So that's a big, you know, I think, again, that's, that's a big, that's a, you know, we're, for that particular property, we're talking about a fairly. We're suggesting a fairly substantial change. And it's a change that we think is, is, is supported by the fact that it's probably never gonna develop to the density that. It, going back to your point about what could it develop, on paper today versus in reality, there's a big difference.
Yeah, I see the reasoning behind that, and you don't wanna prevent the sprawl too, right, you wanna force it to be more condensed.
Right, and the, you know, the, the concern is that, you know, there's, I guess, there's a, I'll say a misinterpretation or. You know, there was some thought that they, the feeling that they could probably develop more densely than they actually could really achieve at the end of the day. Um, when you start looking at the constraints on those properties, and we got some mapping from A and R that. I think, to my satisfaction, showed significant, uh, encumbrances on that property. And so even though, again, if you did the mathematics, if you did the mathematics based upon the, the acres and the zoning district and, and said, oh, look what we can do. The actual number you'd actually get to is, is, would be substantially lower, so I think our, our, the plan that we, we sort of suggested. Re- reflects that and probably ends up at the end of the day, giving that, giving a density there that actually would be achievable. Based upon the natural resource constraints. But, there was, there was concern about that.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't realize that was in the circle.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's part of the original golden triangle.
So, that seems like it's. Not too smart to make the sewer core, make it conservative.
But it's not. That's residential recreation. It's a lighter green. Lighter green.
Well, and that's, you know, I think the point there is that that's a new district, right? So how you wanna define that is gonna be what we can do in this process, so we.
The only section of that new district?
Yes, uh, well, there was the two little parcels that we've just talked about, retake, yep.
So I, I might even consider taking that, that section on Old Stage.
Up here? Oh, here, yeah.
I'm, I'm concerned about making, you know, putting that in the same designation as a parcel that, that already has sewer. Until we get.
Well, unless we wanna have that discussion with the selectmen.
That would be a place that we might wanna change in the future, you know, call it one thing today and then be prepared if we don't get a positive response. Call it something different at the end of the day.
Co- cause logically, if you're gonna have density, it's not a bad place for it.
Agreed, and we started putting houses in there.
There is, there, I mean, there is a, again, it, it, this, you know, the other thing to think about is the sewer core boundary is not sacrosanct either.
Right.
So, you could, you. I'm the consultant, I can say that, but, I mean, it's true, I mean, it was originally created, it can be changed, I mean, it's, it's the way things work, right? So, you know, i- i- it is conceivable, again, not suggesting that this is a thing that you should do, but it's conceivable that you. Take away one area and apply to others that better fits your desired land use outcomes.
So, again, I'm gonna circle up again, cause I don't wanna run out of steam. We want to, tonight, we want to. Tell you whether or not we like the neighborhoods. Um, if there's an area that we want to expand, that, that might be, uh. A question that, that you walk away with, you know, what, what would be the consequences of this or not? I don't have, I don't hear clear, consistent agreement to expand the historic section. Um, even though the, the concept of a gateway is, is good, expansion of the historic section, I don't, I haven't heard clear, consistent support. To be, go beyond what's here. Um, we've talked about, I've talked about getting rid of those two little blobs of light green. That really is all I've heard for changes, uh, on this.
I heard a couple of extras, other things.
Oh, the property, making sure the properties are split.
Yeah, making sure properties don't split, um, also, I think what we can do for your next meeting is give you an overlay. So you can really see those, where those boundaries are, I think that would be really helpful for this discussion. Um, Sharon, did, we did include the summary table, maybe we can dumb that down a little bit in terms of acreages.
Thanks.
Well, to make good decisions, makes you, you know, so you're not sort of caught in weeds on it.
For all of us.
Simplify it a little bit, for a better way to phrase it, simplify a little bit, just to concentrate a little bit on the acreages, so you can kinda talk about the net balance of, of. Land in districts today versus districts in the future, that might be helpful. So you can sort of see, okay, how much is shifting from one to another, we can, we can send that to you guys, so you can have that for your next discussion. Yeah, I did hear, I mean, again, maybe I'm, if you correct me if I'm wrong, but I did hear some con- consensus around the idea of. Of looking at the historic district boundaries, so maybe the way to handle that is to blow that area up a little bit. And give you a little more detail about where all the property lines are. And some of the, you know, pictures of some of the uses and stuff, so you can sort of make an informed decision around that.
If, we shouldn't be splitting the property lines just to expand, you know, for the sake of expanding it, that's as much. Um, for the sake of clarity, I, I think I'd like to ask the commission. To basically vote on whether or not we like this concept. It's not an absolute lock, but I think you've got some clear takeaways, is that legitimate, is anybody?
Can we talk about the light green first to Matt?
Absolutely.
Um, so it's right between two. S- you know, subdivisions, basically. And. What, are we trying to protect that, or are we just saying, oh, since we, it's wet, we might as well make it. Conservation recreation.
Well, we're calling it residential, though, so we're giving it, we're identifying it.
What does that mean? Do, do you guys have density numbers for that?
Yep, we do. Instead of, as compared to straight residential?
Yeah, the density was, was very con- uh, consistent with the, um.
While you're looking it up, Mark, I also wanna point out that the property just east of, um, can't tell which street this is, but. Um, this portion is the open space area for the residential subdivision here, so this is deed restricted.
Development, it's not gonna happen.
Oh, so like, half of that is? Yeah, this, this is not developable. Unless the deed were to change, the zoning wouldn't really affect that.
Uh, let's see.
So that whole, that whole parcel out there, that's all part of that sub- subdivision?
About a third of it, about a third of it.
Oh, that changes my thinking.
Uh, I can't remember exactly what it's called.
We anticipated in that area, a maximum of, um. Forty-six units, I think, is the number. Yeah, one acre.
And that would be mostly along Towers Road and sort of, just north of where the brown is.
Yeah, yeah.
But what we've been talking about, we're talking about extending the parcel that's brown up a little bit.
To cover some of that. This goes up, yeah.
But that, is that split at the sewer core?
But if you're not, if you're not splitting property up, then that, this green section here. Should, in here, if this is part, this, part of this is part of that, shouldn't this be. Same color as this, and put that deed restriction on here? Cause, cause, well, that, no, right, see, I'm seeing this as the end of this development, period. If you're telling me that this goes to here, then this section here is part of that. It's just deed restricted as to, if it's gonna be, can't be built on, but it's part of that. Condo association or whatever it is, landowners association, but then it should be, it might be permanently. Recreation, but it's part of that, that property.
It's currently zone R two, same as that.
So that's not realistically showing your zoning.
So, yeah, and I think it's clear, you know, we are taking, that we're going from the planning area concept to zoning districts, so these are normal things that are gonna happen. Yep, so yeah, I think that's a good point, that's something we should, you know, declare, to, as, you know, this is part of this zoning district, so.
So we're essentially gonna be cutting that light green in half.
Yeah.
You know, taking about half, half of the, the space away.
Like these two little pockets here.
Because there's also the, the chunk on the bottom, the south, from the extension of the property in. But, conceptually, I mean, try not to split property lines.
What's the big problem with splitting property lines?
I, I actually was looking at it from a point of view of single landowner.
Yeah.
I wasn't looking at it so much of a view from a development perspective, but the two properties, as I understand it, the two properties that I had originally pointed out. One, both in the north and one in the south of the, of the demarcation, were single landowners.
Right.
And by splitting it, we're having a direct impact on a single landowner that may or may not allow them to do the development they were looking for.
Well, we're, anytime we make changes, we're gonna impact landowners.
I understand, but I, again, I was looking at it from a point of view of, a, 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 a single residence, not, not a, not a development where there's, you know. Um, a developer that's coming in that can either absorb or deal with changes, but. If, if, if I've now lost the ability to do something with my property as a single owner, what's the impact to me? The single house, single residence sort of thing, so.
Right, but if it makes a lot of sense to have the line where it is, then.
The, the, you know, one of the demarcations for you here was the old rail bed.
Yep.
And so again, from a logical sort of breakpoint, it felt like that was a, a, a good. Thing in the, in the, out there that would actually help sort of define some of the built spaces, like, you know, so the back of the price chopper kinda fit along that. Um, I think that, that point that was just raised, though, I think is a, is a, is an important one to recognize that we don't have to, um. You know, you don't have to follow property lines, but there is a, I think, a good reason to do it, it just makes it easier. For the developer, whoever there is, if it's a, a, a professional developer or a single family, you know, single property owner. And it also makes it easier for staff as they sort of look at the, so the built outcome, but you don't wanna play, if it doesn't make sense, if there is like. You know, a real compelling reason to not do that.
We did challenges in the past where a portion of the property was in conservation and a portion was in residential. I'm thinking, I'm thinking of, uh, Wesley P Hollow.
We, we have a, we made a regulation that allows the planning commission to determine how that property owner.
True.
Could pick.
Yep.
So if it's split, you decide how they wanna, how you wanna handle it.
With the exception of, of this area, though, for the most part, I think. You know, a couple little pieces down here, for the most part, they do follow pretty closely to the property lines, and we don't have to worry about, there's not like overly large lots.
Yeah.
So that makes it a lot easier, so having a single zoning district and that covers a single, smaller lot, just. A small lot with multiple zoning district is really challenging, because then you have to figure out, not just which one you wanna pick, but. You know, if there's two conflicting ones, then what do you really do, and that can have a real profound effect on the outcome.
Weren't the two property owners that we're still talking about, the green area, yeah, that area, weren't they in agreement with what was sort of decided in the. You know, what we were talking about?
I don't recall any agreement from the property owners on the north side, and I don't believe the property owner that I was referring to on the south side's been involved with this.
Well, um, um. Jeff Lyon and Sally Flory.
My recollection was that Jeff is, yeah, I think that, if I remember, the chair last time said, be part of the process, keep coming back, and. We'll talk about it, I think that was my rec- left, left recollection.
So, yes ma'am?
Um, one of my clients, going to your point, um, lives in the yellow section, and, um, I, I do her garden. And, um, her bro- and her husband Brian was telling me that green area that you, that you suggested should be part of the yellow. Um, like, they don't allow hunting, I guess, in that whole green area, cause all the houses, it's just a field, you know, near their house. But I think he made a good point that that should be demarcated yellow, so that conservation people know where the boundary is. You know, if they wanna hunt on the rest of it, they'll know that a chunk of it is part of the yellow. Cause my client lives right on that edge of that green area, but in the yellow, and I think it's a really good idea what you, you said.
Well, it, it gives you a false sense of, of what's there.
Right, and people need to feel safe.
To be clear, all this area is within the no discharge zone, so there's no shooting a lot anyway.
But I'm just going by what my client told me.
But when it comes to recreation space. But when it comes to recreation space and you're looking at it, yes, it may be recreational space. By deed restriction because it's declared open space. Which, you know, period, so you can't, you've already said that you can't build there. So if you, you know, you need to know those pieces, right now I'd look at that and say, okay, you could do something with that. But no, now you're telling me you can't do something with that, it's part of the yellow space. Okay, it's, it needs to be part of the yellow space.
That makes sense.
Just playing devil's advocate, though, uh, I mean, I understand it from a property standpoint, but from a functional recreational use, you can develop it. For types of recreation, so the recreation residential district may allow more types of re- re- um, recreational use. And again, it would still be restricted by whatever the deed says. But there is a potential that that you could do more for recreation in that district than you could in a residential district. So again, it's also defining what uses, what types of recreation are gonna be allowed within that. That parcel.
So as an exa- as a good, it's a good.
Hang on, hang on a second, is it owned by the association?
Yeah, yeah, but the point.
But what if the association wants to develop for types of recreation that may not be allowed in the residential district?
That's the point, I think, is the, and the other point is I could could come back and say, okay, we wanna turn it into a park. You know, that's something that, again, the recreation residential district probably would allow for the development of that as a park. I don't think that would, that would negate their, uh, their open space requirements if it, its use was a park. So, again, I don't know what the specifics of their agreement are, but.
Right, but you may not allow for a larger scale park as a type of open space within a residential district.
Yeah, the definitions really matter there, cuz I mean, I think that's one of the things, again, this process will, one thing we will be getting to, it's on one of our agendas, is talking about open space and parks and. And there, right now, you don't have enough, um, clarity and types of those things. To capture all of the possibilities that go along with them, so I think there is, you know, again, they, you know, you're absolutely right, I mean, as it as it functions today. It's open space for that planned due development. But I think Sharon's point's also true in that if at some point they would like to say, then say the residents go, we really want some sports fields. To do there in that facility, and they, all the neighbors want a ball field, a soccer field. It's not foregone conclusion that you could actually do that under the residential district today.
I think you could for that development, though, not open to the public.
But that's my point, maybe they went, well, open for the public. Then you keep, so that's the kinds of things that I think that would, you know, that's one of the reasons, I think, that that in trying to capture relative to a neighborhood. The idea was that that portion of the E T C would be largely focused on lower density residential, would there probably be some accommodation for recreational assets?
I I guess my point is that that's somebody's backyard. Well, so all these people in here, this is their backyard. So if you're regulating what they're gonna do in their backyard. You've already regulated what they're doing in the front yard, now you're telling them what they can do in their backyard, although you already told them. That that their backyard can't be done anything but what it currently is. So why not put it here, because you've got this spot. I'm assuming that's also get deeded, open space.
That was green at one point.
Yeah, it was.
So, but it's yellow now.
Yep.
So how is that different? They're both open recreation, but one's yellow, one's green.
Well, again, it's it's defining different types of open space and some will would be allowed in some districts. It wouldn't be allowed in other districts, so it become a type of use. And it'd be important to make sure that whatever that ends up being, that, you know, if it's if it's more of a regional recreational use, it probably wouldn't be allowed in a. Residential open space district.
Would you guys be willing, able, I mean, would you feel comfortable if we identified areas such as that parcel? And the parcel, um, that's currently purple? If we were to say tonight, we like this plan, but those are gonna be dotted lines or those, those are gonna be shaded areas for the time being. I think there's validity in 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 everything we've talked about so far. You know, is there, we may get further in line, and Diane, this this is like what John was saying, we may get further down the line and say, it makes sense to have that be yellow. Or, hey, it really needs to stay green.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 don't feel, don't feel in any way.
Think that's a good approach, use dotted lines for a bit.
And I think that that area and the and the area to the southwest of, uh, um, of, uh. Not not southwest, the the, thank you, that area over there, you can see where I'm pointing.
So another, I did, I think, first off, yes, we don't, you know, that's the purpose of these discussions, we don't wanna sort of, if there's something we can't lock in. I think what I wanted, was hoping to get tonight, I am hearing this, um, is that generally speaking, that the boundary, the sort of the disposition of these districts. Makes some sense and that, you know, there is this, again, that we've, we haven't talked a lot about the mixed use district, but it sounds like we've got some. General agreement that the, that's okay, at least that's what I'm feeling. That the mixed use north or northwest or west or. Purple district is 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 a reasonable starting point for the boundary for that.
I would've called it west because we don't really have a west.
Very good.
And it is west of Route fifteen?
Sure, is the planning commission okay with this?
That's an area that I would like to remain as a dotted line or shaded, that's that's. That would be the one that if we don't get positive reception to discussions about sewer core, then that, I think, needs to be a different, a different designation.
Okay, great, great. So that's, yeah, that was, you know, we really wanted to, that's the conversation tonight we wanted to have, so.
So I'd actually like, I think, to formalize this to some degree as we go through, and I'd like the commission. To, I'd like to put a vote out, this final, whether or not we're in agreement with this stage. With what we've talked about tonight, I don't care, it it doesn't have to be a super formal, this exact map, but. That we've, we've gotten to this point, we like what the staff has done, we like what our consultants have done. And we've identified the areas that we wanna either call out for for potential changes in the future or things we wanna tweak a little bit. Is that, anybody concerns about doing it that way? Diane, I do, you are visiting, so this one you don't get to vote in, um, but I've been very appreciative of your of your engagement on this. So I'm actually gonna put the motion up that we accept the, uh, what the consultants have presented or as presented tonight. With the qualifying statements and discussions. Um, and. We encourage them to keep going forward and and we'll look forward to the next batch, the next modifications.
I'll second the motion.
Any additional discussion on that, anybody wanna tweak that at all to make the?
I think this has already been said, but I think, um, what's gonna be critical is when we get into what I think is the next meeting, is basically a review of the site criti- criteria. That's when we discuss about the requirements for each one of these sections, that we, I think we've all acknowledged that it's often that people back and say, now it doesn't make sense.
We don't wanna be able to essentially treat these like a checkbox, as we go through, that we're done this piece. Done may not be completely done, but I wanna know that we're done for tonight, we can, this is an accomplishment, so. All those in favor of that motion, nope?
Center district, the historic part, did you wanna continue to explore expanding that or leave it as is?
I think the question, and I I think you you've heard, that there's some, there's some consideration of is there any logical. Or is there reasonable expansion, contraction, whatever, but it's it's as is right now. With the idea that it might be appropriate to to expand it to some degree.
Yeah, and and these boundaries will not be finalized until the final zoning districts are approved.
This vote does not finalize.
No, it does not.
This is really just to to acknowledge our discussion tonight and to say that this process, we're we're good with this process. Okay, so. We've already had it moved and seconded, so all those in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries. This really was just to to confirm or affirm that you guys are going, this is a good direction. And staff and you guys are all moving in a way we're supportive of.
Dotted lines give us some more work to do, too, I think, yeah, with staff, yep.
Dana, Darren, anything from your perspective that we need to take away? It would be nice if we had some feedback for the next meeting, just if we've had some verbals or something about, if there's any ideas on the expansion of the town.
I'm gonna give you some of those overlays, and I think I'll send that to staff so you have it for your next meeting.
We'll do some research on, you know.
Dana, your voice changed.
No, I just wanna say I'm really liking this voting in the moment idea. Um, and so I I thoroughly appreciate, um, doing this going forward.
It's good to know where the tea leaves are flowing, you know, so, yeah, that's true, helps a lot.
Excellent. So, is there anything else that we wanna touch on on this, or do we wanna get to minutes and other business? I'm looking at Dana for this, or Dar- Darren, or Sharon.
I think we're good for tonight.
So, Mark, Sharon, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hope we can keep being this effective.
We will do our best to make sure it is.
We're not gonna guarantee being that cooperative.
Full disclosure, I'm on my planning commission, I know how it rolls.
All right, so where are we on the minutes?
Bring in the dots.
Let's not talk dots, I'll get in trouble. Um, where the heck is it? Problem with having a mouse that's really, of course, it's super tiny. Well, the problem is, the problem is, I I, when I dock it at work, it goes to, um, the monitors, and if I don't. You get the minutes, anybody get the minutes? He's got them, okay, take a motion of the minutes from September thirteenth.
Approve the mo- minutes of September thirteenth.
So moved by Tom, seconded by Shu, is there any amendments to the minutes that anybody wants to offer, any corrections? All those in favor of the minutes as written, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes carry, six zero. Other business.
Just your P C file folders, um, had the notice of public hearing for the solar that you're very familiar with now on.
Good, take a motion. All those in favor, oh, do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor, aye, we are adjourned.